Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the March 4th, 2013 Morganton City Council Meeting. This time, I'd call on Sheldon Stevenson to lead us with our invocation. Steve?
I was wondering if you had heard in the, on the TV or someplace that the people in China now are building, make, putting buildings on rice lands. They don't seem to know that the feeding the people is much more important than money. And we need to trust God to do for us what we need to have done. So much turmoil going on now, it seems difficult to do that, but God cares much more about the beauty of the land, the beauty of the streams and the mountain, the clear, the clearness of the air, for example, than he does about money. And we have to trust God, is what I'm getting at. I come from the southern part of New York State. I don't know if you hold that in your mind or not, but across that whole place, there are huge lakes, some forty miles long and three, four miles wide. They call them the Finger Lakes, you know? And they were put there by the glaciers. They're all glacier lakes. And I had a cottage on one, and I thought that God made it just for me. That the beauty of the nature, the beauty of the, of the land and the thing is so important to God. I'd like to hold before you a psalm and a prayer. Listen to these words. Make a joyful noise unto the Lord, all ye lands. Make a joyful noise unto the Lord, all ye lands. Serve the Lord with gladness. Come before his presence with singing. Know ye that the Lord, he is God, and not we ourselves. We're his people, sheep of his pasture. So enter his gates with thanksgiving and to his course with praise. Be thankful unto him, bless his name. Would you pray with me now? For the beauty of the earth, for the glory of the skies, for the love which from our birth over and around us lies. Lord of all, to thee we raise this our prayer of grateful praise. For the beauty of each hour of the day and of the night, hill and vale, tree and flower, sun and moon and stars of light. Lord of all, to thee we raise this our prayer of grateful praise. For the joy of human love, parent, brother, sister, child, friends on earth and friends above. Lord of all, to thee we raise this our prayer of grateful praise. Amen.
Thank you, Steve. This time, I'll introduce our city council. On my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, city councilman. City Councilman Forrest Fleming, Louie Vina, our lawyer, our attorney, city attorney. I'm Mel Cohen, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, city councilman. John Cantrell, city councilman. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary. And Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community in Morganton. This time, I'll read a resolution honoring retiring city employee Art Mosley. Art, you can meander a little bit up toward the microphone, and I'll read it. Resolution honoring author C. Mosley. Whereas Arthur Art C. Mosley was employed by the city of Morganton as supervisor of the community house on August 14th, 2000. And whereas Art Mosley has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the community house and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for thirteen years, two months. And whereas Art Mosley retired from the city of Morganton as supervisor of the community house on March 1st, 2013. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Arthur Art Mosley and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Morganton, mayor present this resolution to author Art C. Mosley. Adopted this the fourth day of March, 2013. Mel Cohen, mayor. Sally Sandy, city clerk. Make this in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Art, you have been a tremendously good...
Good.
Heard that.
You've been someone to spread the word of Morganton. A lot of people have enjoyed working with you and seeing you. You're a goodwill ambassador for the city of Morganton, and you have been for those thirteen years.
Appreciate that.
I want to present this to you, and there are three checks. And if you wait on me after you, after I finish the council meeting, we'll go spend.
Okay. I'll be outside, okay?
You're welcome to say anything you'd like.
Just a moment or two. First of all, Mel, thank you. Sally, thank you. City council, thank you so much. And for anybody else that knows me, I'm glad that I've got to know you. Number one, and foremost, and of all the other things I want to say, if it had not been for this job, I wouldn't have met some of the finest people in Morganton. I came from a different background in food, and I came to a different venue, and it afforded me the opportunity to meet people like Dr. Hamer, John Cantrell, a lot of folks. Folks that I'd heard about, but I didn't know anything about. Come to find out, they're just people like all of us. But one thing that they all did was they welcomed me at the community house. And speaking of the community house, if I've heard it once, I've heard it a hundred times from people that don't live here in Morganton. Gosh, I wish we had something where we live, like the Morganton Community House. It's a facility that, it's just hard to explain what it does for the good of this town and this community. There are a lot of people who don't know what it's about, so there's a lot of opportunity there to continue to spread the word about the community house. But the vision and the future of the community house can be and probably will be strong as long as you put the proper amount of focus to it. But it's been a blessing to me. I will, I won't miss getting up and working all day on Saturdays and part of Sundays. That part, I can live without. What I will miss are people like you and those folks that are at the community house that I've, that I've really trained and developed and worked with. I'll miss them. But I wish you the best, and I'm going to kind of go on and do something a little bit less stressful, but at the same time, find something that's a niche that will keep me active, because I'm an active type person. Again, I thank each one of you.
Thank you, Art. Godspeed to you, and, and give my best to Pastor Shepherd, if you would.
I will. I'll see, I'll see him in two weeks.
Okay. Take care.
Now, wouldn't it be appropriate, you know, we give a helmet to the retired firefighters? We buy their weapon? Don't we have an apron or something for Art?
The golden apron. I figure you've got enough aprons at home, Art. I hear you. I hear you. Thank you, Art. Okay. Want to read a resolution. And Otis Wilson is in the audience. He's on behalf of Barium Springs. Otis, if you'll come to the microphone. Otis is a member of the Board of Regents of Barium Springs, and I'm going to read a Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. Whereas child maltreatment is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas child maltreatment occurs when parents find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and unable to cope. Whereas over a hundred thousand children are reported as abused and neglected in North Carolina each year. Whereas the majority of child maltreatment cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable with the help of an engaged and supportive community. Whereas the efforts of child maltreatment are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the community as a whole. Whereas child maltreatment not only directly harms children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behavior such as smoking. Whereas all citizens should be involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Whereas effective child maltreatment prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social services agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, I'm Mel Cohen, mayor of the city of Morganton, to hereby proclaim April 2013 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in our community, and call upon the citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child maltreatment and strengthen the communities in which we live. Signed this the fourth day of March, 2013. Mel Cohen, mayor. Sally Sandy, city clerk. Make this in the form of a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye. Otis, thank you for coming tonight and bringing your lovely wife, and you're welcome to say anything you'd like.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the entire council for this proclamation. Since going onto the board of Barium Springs, my eyes have been open to just how much child abuse there is and how hidden it is for most of us. So Barium Springs, in collaboration with several other agencies here in Burke County, such as Options, United Way, the South Mountain Home, and some other organizations, are hoping to raise awareness of child abuse and use the month of April for that. We'll have some things in the newspaper, and you'll see something about a silent march, and you'll see pinwheels in certain key locations around the, the community. But we certainly appreciate your support. Thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, Otis. It's very worthwhile. Appreciate, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Chesley Bailey, please go to the microphone.
Good evening. I'm Chesley Bailey, a senior library program specialist at the Burke County Public Library here in Morganton. I would like to tell you about an exciting upcoming event that we're going to be having on Saturday, March the 23rd, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The Burke County Public Library and the Burke Arts Council are partnering to host our first art expo at the library. And the program is made possible through the grassroots grant program through the North Carolina Arts Council. The program is also free, and it's designed for all ages. And we are going to be having seventeen artists at the expo. We'll be featuring four artists. Our first artist is Nora Mosery from Black Mountain. She's a children's artist, and she will be making books with the children at the event. We also have Brandon Reese, who is a children's illustrator. He's from Charlotte, North Carolina, and some of his clients that he's worked for is Crayola, Nickelodeon, Nick Jr., The Boston Globe, and The Washington Post, and Harper Collins Publishing Company. So we're real excited about that. We also will be having Ken Curtis, who is a glass blower, and he'll be giving a glass blowing demonstration. Also Brad Parton from Lawrence, South Carolina, will be coming. He's a comic artist, and he will be featuring his new comic book at the event. Our other local artists, they're coming from the areas of Morganton, Valdez, Drexel, Hickory, and Nebo. They'll be bringing all different mediums of art. We will have acrylic paintings, sculpture, paper quilling, pottery, wood carving, photography. We also have a makeup artist, and she will have live models and will be applying special effects makeup. Also have flyers here, if you would like a flyer for the event.
Leave us a few, please.
Okay. And I want to thank you for having me here to speak about the art expo, and thank you for supporting the arts and also our library programming.
We'll post it around City Hall. We already have, I think, and looking forward to bringing my granddaughter.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chesley.
Mayor, I think it's real important that, that all the people here and the people watching on TV recognize just what a treasure our library is, and I think I'd like to urge, you know, everybody on this council to continue their support for this library, because it's very vital to the education in Burke County. And the lack of education in Burke County is one of our problems in attracting industry. And this is very much vital to educating our children.
Very good words, John. I appreciate that. Thank you. If you want to leave those with her, she'll. Thank you, Chesley. Tell your dad hello. Okay. Anything else on public affairs, Sally?
No.
Okay. Municipal power?
No report this month.
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda before you tonight actually includes five items. The staff considers those to be non-controversial and would ask that you consider approving those in one motion unless there's something that someone would like to have removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, those items include three sets of minutes, minutes from the workshop from February 1st, and a regular meeting and a closed session from February 4th, tax releases in the amount of fifty-five dollars and six cents, the approval of the 2013 downtown calendar of events, the extension of the city's audit contract for one year with Eric Bowman, and that is at a price of thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, the same fee as we paid this year. And then the consideration of establishing the speed limit at twenty-five miles per hour. This is on the Western Piedmont campus, and this is a concurrence with the state.
Okay. I'll make a motion. Do we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anyone in the audience who'd like to come before the Morganton City Council that doesn't have anything on the agenda later tonight? Okay. New business. Public hearing, I'll open up. Public hearing is for 1.96 acres of property located at 100 W.A. Harris Road from Light Industrial to general, neighborhood business, submitted by John Hamer.
This property contains a small commercial building, and it's primarily been used over the years for low-impact type operations. And the uses that have been there haven't been late hours of operation, very minimal traffic. What is being requested, or what, the original request was a general business rezoning. That would have allowed many different uses that could potentially have adverse effects on the surrounding area. So after reviewing, considering this item, the staff and the planning commission recommend that the property be rezoned to neighborhood business, which would help to limit the hours of operation and hopefully make a better transition between that and the surrounding area. The public hearing was advertised in the News Herald on February 22nd and March 1st, property posted, and mail notices sent to adjacent property owners.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against? Now's the time. Stand up, state your name, go to the mic. Close the public hearing, council. Two motions.
I'd like the motion to certify this rezoning request is in conformance with Morganton's adopted Mission 2030 Land Development Plan.
Second.
We have a motion with second. Any discussion of this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the motion to adopt an ordinance rezoning 1.96 acres of property located at 100 W.A. Harris Road from Light Industrial to Neighborhood Business, submitted by John Hamer.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion of this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of a resolution of intent of the city to consider an offer to purchase certain real property on College Street, Sally.
For several years, you'll know that we have been interested in getting a retirement development on property on College Street that the city owns. As a matter of fact, we've looked for developers in the past. We've gotten to the point of having contracts on the property two times in the past, and that has fallen through for one reason or another. Over the last several months, we have been talking with the North Carolina School for the Deaf Foundation. And that's a nonprofit corporation that is associated with, but not really a part of the School for the Deaf, but they work together. They are interested in purchasing this property to develop a retirement community on the property that would primarily serve the deaf and the blind. They are establishing themselves as a DBC, Inc., and that is a corporation that would look to purchase the property. It is six and a half acres. The purchase price that has been offered is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In order for this to move forward, they would put up a five percent deposit, which they have already done today, if you accept this offer. That would allow us to then advertise the property. It would advertise the five hundred and fifty dollar purchase price, five hundred fifty thousand dollar purchase price, little difference in that. Twelve months of an option period that they would have to get their financing and their project together. It would also allow them, at the end of that twelve months, if they were making sufficient progress, to go up to an additional six months with your approval in that option period. We would advertise this. There would be a ten-day period that we would take upset bids for the purchase of the property. At the end of that ten days, if we didn't have one, this would come back to you at your April council meeting if you move forward, and you would then have the opportunity to actually approve the contract for the option to sell the property.
Okay. One motion, council.
Motion to adopt a resolution expressing the intent of the city council of the city of Morganton to consider an offer to purchase certain real property on College Street for the city of Morganton.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck. Okay. Consideration of selecting point and, point and pay at the city's internet payment process, as, at the city's internet process payment.
Yes. Yeah. For several years, we've been accepting internet payments, and we have used a vendor to do that, that first started serving local governments. Since that time, things have changed. The Visa rules have changed. That has allowed more players to get into this game. Karen has been investigating it, and she is here tonight to talk to you about this.
Well, I'm very excited to, to be in front of you this evening and talk to you a little bit about this very briefly. As you can see from your screens, the vendor that I'm asking you to select is point and pay. I have spoke with a number of different internet payment providers, and I believe that this is the right fit for the city of Morganton. This vendor will provide both internet payment processing options and also telephone payment options, which is something we do now, but it's at a much lower cost than we currently offer our customers. We will be expanding the kind of cards that we take with this. We'll take Visa, MasterCard, Discover, American Express, debit cards, and prepaid cards. Pretty much covers the gamut there. We will, we will continue to charge convenience fees, although the convenience fees proposed by this vendor are considerably lower than the ones that official payments charges our customers now. The fee structure will be two point six percent across the board that our customers will pay, with a few exceptions. There will be a minimum charge of a dollar fifty, which is fairly low. There will be for tax payments, if someone uses a debit card, there will be a maximum charge of three dollars and ninety-five cents. That's, that is a very, very competitive offer. We will also start taking, probably the most exciting part of this, is that we will start being able to take e-checks. And what an e-check is, is an opportunity online to enter off of your check, the routing transit number, and then your bank account number, and the payment then will come out of, directly out of your bank account, and you, again, would be initiating that either over the phone or over the internet. And there will not be a fee for that. Again, I think that that's the most exciting part of this presentation. Again, is that we will now offer our citizens and taxpayers and utility customers the opportunity to make a payment without a fee being assessed. If you allow us to move ahead with this, we will begin tomorrow with contract negotiations. And I suspect that we could probably be up in line by early July on this. Again, there's, there has to be a certain amount of software programming that needs to take place between point and pay and between our utility and tax and cable software. Also, what people can see is, I wanted to include a visual, and so what you're seeing in front of you is kind of what the screen will look like. On the, on the, kind of the screen that's hidden is the screen that appears today. It'll look the same way our customers are used to looking at their bills. And, but the screen that will pump up, pop up, that's sort of the screen in front, shows you just how easy it will be for our customers to use that. And then also, there is a visual of the receipt that they would receive online. I could go on for hours about this, but I won't. But I would be happy to entertain any questions that you all have of me.
Any questions of Karen? I would like Forrest to make the motion when we get to that, because he has been a proponent for it, and want to thank him for doing that, Forrest. Any questions of Karen? Go ahead, Forrest.
I vote to select point and pay as the city's internet payment processor.
Second. Have the motion a second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Karen, and thank all your staff for a great job here, and it's good to see that we're kind of being in line with everybody else in the country now as far as the internet payments and, and for the minimum amount of fee. That two point six is pretty much across the board for everybody else, so good job. Thank all your staff. I appreciate what you've done on this.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Sidney, second. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of revised and updated versions of the city of Morganton's construction specifications for water lines, water line material specifications, construction specifications for sewer lines, sewer line material specifications, and utility construction erosion control specifications. Sally?
That's a mouthful, isn't it? But so exciting. Now, that'll really drum up some excitement, won't it? Several times in the past, we have done annual updates and revisions to our standards and our specifications. Those become awfully important when we're doing utility extensions and utility repairs and projects and things like that. Over the years, we have changed those several times. This year, Mark Young and his folks invested the time with help of the Water Resources Department to fully rewrite the standards, and it's a fairly extensive document, getting those to be, matching what they need to, getting all the right parts and sections so that they flow and make sense, so that contractors and people who need to use these can make sense out of them. We will also be able to have those in this format on the city's website. We will be able to go paperless for technical support for project building, bidding, and hopefully print less paper, I guess kill less trees, and let those folks that need them be able to access them online. Mark's here. I'm sure he could talk for hours, literally, on this, if you want him to.
I have to call on him? I'll make a motion to authorize and approve and revise the updated versions of the city of Morganton's construction specifications for water lines, water line material specifications, construction specifications for sewer lines, sewer line material specifications, and utility construction erosion control specifications. They have the second. We have the second. Any discussion if you know what this is all about?
Trust the staff.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right. One more item, consider, two more items, but really. Consideration of amendments to sewer use ordinance, Sally.
This to another exciting topic. Now that we got our material specifications and list correct, we also need to correct our sewer use ordinance. And this is something, we have been through this exercise before as well. This is something that we do in order to continue to get our permit issued. DWQ, Division of Water Quality, which is a division of the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources, requires us to do this. There have been changes in updating and amending to our ordinance. You see, this is also another lengthy document that you have in here. There are numerous procedural and technical definition changes in here and these are all done in order to comply with the state's regulations so that we keep our permitting just so we can tell you that the substance of this, however, has not changed, it remains the same. And Brad is here tonight and I'm sure he could probably talk hours and Louis could probably contribute to that as well on the new sewer use ordinance.
May I, before we proceed, may I add one thing? Despite our best efforts, there are a couple of typos as to which part of the code of ordinances we are changing, where it says in your motion or proposed action, chapter eight, article D, I don't know where that came from. It should read part five, chapter one, article D, in both places there. That's what is being, the sewer use ordinance is part five, chapter one, article D.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to rescind part five, chapter one, article D of the city's code of ordinances, the sewer use ordinance, and adopt as a replacement new chapter eight.
Part five.
Part five. I'm sorry. Okay, part five, part five, chapter one.
Article D.
Article D, sewer use ordinance. In the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Now, discussion. Anybody want to ask Brad any questions about it? I'm sure you have some built up. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. The last item on the agenda is an item that was added. It's an ordinance and an order directing the code enforcement officer to effectuate the purposes of article E, part nine of the charter and code of ordinances for the city of Morganton regarding property at one twenty-four Elm Street. And this is a property that is somewhat in disarray with a fire in an apartment house a number of years ago and it's standing wide open and it was taking us a while, but we have now an action that's needed and I will make that unless you want to ask questions. Sally?
Can we clarify one thing, please?
If I may, just briefly, the reason this is before the council is because by ordinance, when the building inspector has determined that a residential structure is not fit for human habitation and has directed, in this case, that it be either repaired or closed, it isn't condemnable. Before, he has done that, the building inspector has, and has issued an order to the owner, before he could proceed further, before the city may proceed further to board up the building, there must be an action authorizing it by the council. And that's what is before you now. Now, the time allowed under the building inspector's order for the owner to correct the problem by boarding it up has not expired yet. So this ordinance is anticipatory, authorizing the city to proceed if the building owner does not do so by the time allowed, which is March fifteenth.
Okay. Action is needed. I'm going to read it. Motion to adopt an ordinance and an order directing the code enforcement officers to effectuate the purposes of article E, chapter two, part nine of the charter and code of ordinances for the city of Morganton regarding property at one twenty-four Elm Street.
Second.
Okay, have the second. Any discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay. Anything from any of the council members or staff? Meeting adjourned.